Do we have to take a roll call to call the meeting in order or no?
No, we can just make them, each person make a motion to begin the meeting, one from each committee.
So I'll motion for the region.
Second.
I'll motion for Northborough and the Union.
Wait, so I just have to.
Kelly Gannett motioned for the Northborough and the Union.
Okay. I need Northborough. Oh, I need a Southborough.
Roger Challen motion for Southborough.
And then I need a second for the Union and Northborough.
Keith LeBelle, second for Northborough and the Union.
And I need a second for Region.
Or, I'm sorry, I'm seconding for Region and Northborough.
Okay. And then I need one for the Union. No, Keith, you're not on Region.
Keith, Keith did the Union and.
I meant Union, sorry.
Okay.
I'll second for the Region, Sean O'Shea.
Okay. So is that it? That's it, right, Greg?
That is, yep.
Okay, so now I need actions for the minutes.
I'll move for the Region that we vote to approve.
Stan?
I'll second for the Regions, Paul.
Kelly Gannett motions for the Northborough. I'll second for Northborough, Lauren Bailey-Jones.
Roger Challen motion for Southborough.
Paul Desmond, second for Southborough.
And then, do we need Union? We don't need Union, right?
No.
Okay. Alright, so now we need to do a roll call.
You want to go?
Just go right from the list, starting with Northborough School Committee.
Okay, Susan?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Joan? Joan?
Unmute yourself.
Hold space down.
Yes? Kelly?
Yes.
Alright, so Southborough, Katura?
Unmuter.
Katura?
Hold your space bar down and then talk.
Unmute, Katura.
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Okay, so yes for me, Kathleen?
Yes.
Paul? Desmond?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kathleen Holland?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Alright, 100%. Okay, our next is the COVID-19 health situation district response.
So I want to provide the committee and the community with an update on the COVID health situation. And first, I just want to say that I'm grateful for the educators and their continued dedication to their students and for families who have embraced the challenges of helping students learn at home. I think it's safe to say we're all juggling unusual responsibilities. And then although remote learning is new and challenging, we do believe as a district that students will benefit from both engaging with their caring school community and from continuing to learn in the home environment. We have an amazing team throughout the district and with me this evening are several of the team members who will provide an update to the committee on their specific area of expertise. And I will say that our first and foremost priority is the safety and well-built being of students, families and staff, and that will continue to be our top priority through the closure. We also are paying close attention to issues of equity and trying to pay close attention to the physical and mental health needs and academic needs of all our students throughout the district and that we're trying to maintain connections with families and students as much as we can possibly remotely, given the circumstances. We are not trying to replicate the work that happens in our schools. We are trying to do the best we can to continue education under the current circumstances. So when we first closed schools two weeks ago, our intent was to come back to school, back into session, actually this past Monday. That was changed to April 6th as the DESI, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, changed the date and then the latest change was from the governor. We will not be returning to session until May 4th. So in the meantime, we are planning and logistics and making sure that there's continuity of learning in place during the closure. So I'd like to have a few folks give some updates. So Julie will give a technology update and I'll let Julie begin with her quick update.
Okay, thanks Greg. So at the very beginning of this, I was a little bit excited that all teachers and students would have to really learn a lot more about the integration of technology. But now I'm starting to realize people are going to be so sick of technology after this, they're not going to want to ever go back to it. So that worries me a little bit, but. So what it is that we've been busy with, one of our big projects has been the distribution of devices to families who need them. At the start of the closure, we had a day where families showed up at either Algonquin or Trotterier and at that point, we handed out over 150 devices to families. Since then, we are still receiving requests from families in need and we are working in partnership with the bus company and on Fridays, we're delivering devices to families. We are also feeling very confident with all of the resources that we currently have in place for our teachers to use, our learning management system Canvas, Google Classroom, Seesaw, Blooms, Google Drive. So we feel like we do have a variety of really great resources that allow for our teachers to share online lessons with students. The Technology Department is doing our best to support teachers and families who are not as comfortable using all of the online platforms. But we're creating tutorials and answering a lot of questions throughout this whole process. There have definitely been some challenges. You know, it's really impossible for us to try to replicate what is going on or has gone on in the schools. You know, teachers having, teachers and students having quick access to devices and also, you know, the delivery of content obviously just isn't the same. But we are doing our best and will continue to support as best we can families and students and teachers through this extended closure.
Thank you, Julie. Any questions for Julie?
I just want to say thank you because I needed some devices for my kids, so thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question for Julie. Are the devices passed out ones that the district already had or did you have to purchase new devices?
They are the ones that we already had, yeah.
Great, thank you for that distribution.
Yeah, and Keith, I have to also shout out to Keith Lavoie and actually Marielle and Duggan, they've been involved. The whole Technology Department has been involved in preparing the devices for delivery, but Keith has been working with the bus company and Marielle and Duggan and all of her nurses have been on the buses doing the actual delivery, so it's been a lot of people involved and it's been a good collaborative effort.
I actually just ordered two shatterproof cases for my kids because I'm so paranoid about it. So I will be donating those back to the school department once we're done with this.
Thanks, Kelly.
Julie, could you also speak briefly about the transition to new student information system and where that is in terms of the changes that have happened?
Sure, absolutely. So as of right now, we are continuing to move forward with the implementation of that because at this point, it really doesn't involve too many people aside from the Technology Department and our data specialist. We meet pretty regularly with the Power School team and they have a schedule in terms of what it is we need to be doing in order to make this happen. We are still pretty confident that we can make this happen because training was one of the issues, but they do offer remote training. I want to be realistic though, if we decide in the future, it doesn't make sense. But currently, we're doing just fine with that implementation and we'll keep you updated if that changes.
Can I just ask one quick question?
Sure.
As we're doing the student system, are we, or actually even rolling out like Northborough Connect 2.0, do we have the money for both? Like, you know what I mean, like is money going to be an option as far as like rolling this, the technology out for the online classes? It was a question that came up from another, another member of our committee.
So currently, you know, in terms of the finances, we did sort of use some of FY20 money to get this implementation going, which would then reduce the cost for next year. So what it is that we owe to them for this year has already been submitted.
Okay. Okay.
I think NSborough Connect 2.0 is really cost neutral for us in terms of implementation because we're using existing resources and devices. It really doesn't impact the technology budget, operational budget for FY20.
Okay.
Just two questions, just from my knowledge. Are devices, do the elementary and middle schools, are they using our devices? Are they being passed out to students there?
Oh, very much so. In fact, way more so than anywhere else. Because the high school is BYOD, we haven't had that many requests from the high school. So all of our requests have been from the elementary and middle school students. But we also want to just make sure families are aware, and I think they are, and be mindful of the fact that we're really not asking all students to be on devices all day long, so especially for the younger students. We're mindful of screen time and so the learning that we are suggesting or sharing online doesn't have to be done online, all of it, some of it, yes, but yeah.
The other question is, just in the normal run of things, there are always technical glitches that come up. Is there a process for students who are having problems with their devices to like submit a ticket? Or I don't know, how are you going to be able to deal with that? That's a challenge.
Right, so we actually discussed that at our Technology Department meeting. Currently, we would like for the students to reach out to the teachers and then for the teachers to submit a ticket. If we decide that that system isn't working, then we can change that. But, you know, we've already handled a couple of issues and we're able to handle them successfully, but we'll continue to monitor that.
I had a question, Julia. Are we comfortable that everybody has an adequate level of internet access? I know we had hotspots available, but are we good with that?
Yeah, so we've handed out a couple more of those hotspots and both Charter Spectrum and Comcast have offered free internet and so I've provided those links to families. And we still have a couple of hotspots that are available and sort of willing to get those to the families in need. But currently, you know, we haven't heard any more, but we'll continue to support those families.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Julie. So next on the agenda is food services update and financial impacts. And Keith Lavoie, Director of Operations, hasn't been formally introduced to the combined committee. So, so welcome Keith. I can tell you that Keith, the timing of Keith beginning his work as Director of Operations immediately following February vacation couldn't have come at a better time in terms of what's happened in the course of the past month. Keith has done amazing work in a short amount of time and has been a great partner. So welcome Keith. And Keith, can you give a brief update on the transportation services and food services that you've been working on?
Sure, I'm just glad you didn't ask me for my transition plan because that got thrown out the window very, very, very quickly. But, you know, timing is everything, I suppose. From the food services perspective, we do have a lot of thank yous to hand out immediately upon the knowledge that we would be closing and even for a short or extended time. We want to make sure that food services was uninterrupted. So we were even working on that prior to the closure began. Very fortunate that Diane Kofer and Kyle Parsons, I partnered with them very quickly to make sure that we mobilized the supplies and the food that we needed in place to make sure that we could do it the right way. So what we've done is, starting on March 18th, we've been able to provide lunch service on Monday, from that point till now, Monday, Wednesday and Fridays. Each person that wishes to participate is being granted two lunches. And for the first two days, on March 18th and 20th, it was pickup at Algonquin and Trotterier. Algonquin was for Northborough residents and Trotterier was for Southborough residents. But quickly, we discovered that that was not going to be advantageous because of the governor's request. So we quickly were able to utilize our assets at NRT and move to a delivery system on March 23rd. And I have to give Jean Pinto a huge amount of credit for this. She has taken all the requests that have come in and have routed it onto four buses, four for Northborough and four for Southborough. And as we continue to get requests for lunches, she's making those adjustments and modifications. And so far, we've really had a nice relationship with NRT during the process. They've been very cooperative in understanding that it's fluid. It's the first time we've done anything like this and they've responded very nicely to us. So today, the report was very well. Like Julie mentioned earlier, Marielle and Duggan has organized the nurses to be a familiar face on the bus as the buses are making the way around the communities, which has been great. We've gotten a lot of feedback from that. And in fact, a few of the nurses have put a few steps on their Fitbits. So walking up driveways and making those special deliveries to families has just been a welcome thing, you know, from around the community. So a huge thank you certainly to Diane and Kyle and Jean for the routing and Marielle and her team of nurses, you know, for the delivery. So I, we are continually evaluating it and seeing how it goes. But today on Monday, even with the dreary weather, we were able to deliver to more than 250 students, which is over 100 families in combination of the two towns.
Wow.
So obviously, the food services is outside of our operational budget. So it does have a financial impact in terms of providing meals to community and families. But it's the right thing to do. We've been monitoring the financial impact of the work very closely. And Becky, can you just speak to where we are in terms of the financial costs of this program?
Sure. Well, the USDA has issued three waivers that relate to our district. And the most important one was approved over the weekend and that is one that allows us to receive reimbursement. The food service program, as we know it, ended on the last day that school was in session. And so what they have put in place is the summer meals program. And we were not eligible for reimbursement because we did not exceed the 50% limit for free and reduced lunch. However, they've nationally granted a waiver that now will allow school districts to be reimbursed for those lunches. So that was great news that was received yesterday morning. In all three districts, we're looking at our revolving accounts and we are continuing to pay our food service staff during the closure. Obviously, some are still working and so we will continue to monitor the bottom lines on those three revolving accounts.
Can I make a comment, Jessica?
I would just like to say congratulations and kudos to this entire staff and Keith and to Rebecca for what you're doing. I think it's wonderful. I saw in Greg's update, you know, that it was going from a pickup to just a bus service. And I thought, well, maybe the numbers had dropped off. But seeing that the numbers have increased from what the beginning was, that is absolutely wonderful. And this is something out of the ordinary that nothing was ever planned for. But you did a wonderful job of taking, assisting those families and the students and even thinking out of the box and having the nurses go, which is a familiar face with them and checking on their families. So thank you very much to the both of you and getting the financial reimbursement for that. Thank you.
But we don't have to pay for the buses to do this, do we?
No, so we, we are currently continuing. We've encumbered all the money for our bus contracts throughout the, for the remainder of the year. So it's a conversation that we need to have as three committees around continuing to pay that contract. And that's later down in the agenda. But right now, we have 32 buses at our disposal to do this type of work that is already budgeted for. So in addition to food services, we've also are doing a technology drop-off with transportation as well.
Yeah, Julie did reference it earlier. So we are using a total of four buses in Northborough, four buses in Southborough for the food delivery. And last Friday was two different vehicles for technology distribution. So as the numbers do, Joan, if the numbers do increase, those number of buses per towns will also increase. And the NRT is fully aware of that and will be able to respond once that need arises.
Thank you very much.
And Becky?
Questions?
Becky, can you speak to, so one of the, we're looking at all of our contracted services, whether it's special education or transportation. Becky's been doing a great job keeping track of all the contracts. One in particular is transportation. Can you speak to transportation and what we're considering?
Absolutely. So we actually had a call this afternoon with DESI. Jay Sullivan is the contact person for this and he has been fabulous in terms of keeping the business managers in the state informed. So one of the things that they are recommending is that districts organize, those districts who have the same bus vendors organize as a group and appoint one or two individuals to negotiate an amended contract with each bus vendor on behalf of their fellow school districts. The theory behind this is that it will make it consistent among the districts. It will reduce legal fees, it will streamline the process and then everyone is doing the same thing. Some fears had been that some districts would pay vendors, others would not. And then you may have a vendor who would no longer be financially viable because they were not able to support their operations. So that is something that is getting started within the next few days. And so one of the things that we would ask is for the school committee's approval to participate in this combined effort to renegotiate our transportation contract.
So do we have to vote? So is that something you want us to vote on tonight?
It's, yes.
So that would be just for the remainder of this year?
It would be.
Okay. And then are you also, are we still going forward with the contracts for next year?
So we have received our bids. We have determined the low bidder and because of all of this, we have not been able to finalize that contract. But yes, we are moving forward with that.
Okay, so Greg, how do you want me to do this?
So we need a motion from each committee to allow us to enter and open up a negotiation for NRT and the transportation. And if we do want to do it, starting with Northborough first.
Okay, does anyone have any questions or are we okay with doing this?
I have, I have a question. So this is just to open up negotiations and then depending on the results of the negotiations, do we vote again?
Yeah, so this, if you give us the authority to negotiate and land on an agreement of some sort, you know, an example would be there's a fuel cost in our contract currently. That might be an example where they're not incurring those costs for fuel. Therefore, it'd be a reduction in our overall contract. So the negotiation piece would allow us to enter into a lower contract price due to the conditions.
And if I can just further explain also, there's Mass General law that only allows cities and towns and regional school districts to pay for goods and services that have actually been received. By the terms of our contract, we're really not receiving the services that are outlined in our contract with NRT. So a town accountant may refuse to pay for those services and I'm not saying that ours have said that they would not. But in fairness, or rather to be in compliance with the law, this is one of the suggestions that was made by DESI is that we enter into an amended contract.
Paul?
So just to be clear, I thought I heard you say Becky, that everyone, or it's been encouraged by DESI that every school district that uses NRT, appoint some individual or small group of people to negotiate for all of those clients at once.
But it would be a collaborative process. But yes, there would be one or two people.
So do we know who would be sitting at the table representing us at this point in time? Would it be someone from Northborough, Southborough or the Region? Or would it be someone from, I don't know, wherever else NRT has clients? Is that?
That is still to be determined. They were compiling the list of the districts and the bus companies and then they were going to send out that list to districts tomorrow. So that's still to be determined.
So.
We would.
We, yes.
Does NRT have a lot of clients? You know, is it likely that we'll be negotiating for ourselves or?
I can tell you, in this local area, you know, Marlboro and Berlin-Boylston both have NRT. And then there are some on the North Shore in the, I believe, Lawrence area. So we would, you know, we would, I would work to be a member of that committee or at the very least, make sure that there's somebody from Central Mass that is representing us.
I think NRT is the largest transportation provider in the Commonwealth for student transportation. Becky's.
First student, when I was looking at the list, first student could be a close second or if not the biggest.
Have a question?
Yep.
So I didn't know if we actually got an answer. So to Katura's question, after we vote on this, then, and then the contract is negotiated, would it then come back to the committees again to vote for approval?
Generally with contracts, they are brought forward to the committee for approval for the transportation contracts.
Okay, so probably like each individual committee maybe or I don't know.
There are three separate, there are three separate contracts, so it would have to go to the three committees.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Yeah, so if I, I just kind of a follow up on that. So but, you know, is it going to be one of those like similar to the way we bargain with the, with the unions that, you know, once, once our representatives reach agreement with NRT? I mean, is it going to be, is it going to be inferred or in fact, maybe even an obligation on our part if we participate to agree with the conclusions reached by whoever the bargaining representatives are? Or I mean, or will, will we in fact have the freedom to kind of back away?
I think that's a great question. I mean, this is something that's really never been done. This is such a unique situation. So I think that's a great question and something that I can certainly ask as we start this process.
Just a general comment too, I think there's power in numbers, obviously. But any point in time, we can, we can enter into our own contract negotiations with NRT if it isn't in our favor to do so. It doesn't commit us to anything other than just working collaboratively with our neighbors.
I have a question. Aren't we also in the process of renegotiating or negotiating a new contract for the next several years? And I don't know how or if this is going to play into that. And another thing is, you mentioned something about part of this whole thing is to make sure these companies remain solvent. And I think that's a huge issue because, I mean, we're already getting, you know, it's hard to get anybody to bid on these things from what I understand. So I mean, having a company go out of business is probably not our best interest.
So I think one of the big things that we've all grappled with over the past few years, past few weeks, not years, is making sure that we have the right way to pay these vendors. NRT has kept all of their staff on payroll. The reason being that there's already a school bus driver shortage. So if they were to lay people off, their fear would be that they would then find new employment. And the other piece is making sure that they are solvent. They have leases, they have, you know, buildings, mortgages, rent that they need to keep up with. And so we want to make sure that when we are ready to start to bus kids once again, that they are ready. And so we want to make sure that when we are ready to start to bus kids once again, that they are ready to join us in that.
So a question on that, if I may? So is it our, is it, is it the district's responsibility? Is it the, is it the parents of the students' responsibility to ensure they're insolvent? Or is that their responsibility? Are we going to do what we can to assist? Is that what you're asking the taxpayers to do? Or are they, are they eligible for loans through the government that we've been hearing about?
I do not know if they're specifically eligible for loans. I know that there is a federal assistance for school districts to pay for school bus transportation. That's something relatively new that Desi is looking into and will provide us with more guidance on. But I know that the, I think that the communication that's been given to us has been to try to pay your vendors and to try to pay your employees as we go through this unanticipated closure.
All right, and that's understood. I just think we need to be incredibly mindful and, and really analyze each of these situations so that we are doing something on, on the backs of the taxpayers that we should not be doing. If there's a part for us to play and we've done our due diligence and analyzed that, and there's the, and the cost benefit analysis weighs in the favor of the, of the students and the families of the district, then, then okay. But I want to, I just want to make sure that we do that level of analysis before moving forward on anything like that.
I think too, it's important just to be mindful that the closure is through May first. So it's a relatively short window of time that we're looking to recoup, you know, to enter contracts. I think it's another conversation if we enter into a longer period of time where school is out of session. But right now, A first is, is the last day would be closed and we'd be opening up May fourth. And again, one of the concerns is if they laid off all their bus drivers, would we be ready to transport students on May fourth when we reopen?
And I would also say, just having gone through the bid process, that the low bidder was considerably lower than the next bidder. So it is in our financial interest over the upcoming years to make sure that that bidder is solvent. Because it could be a larger cost to the district over the next few years if we were to go with our second highest.
Another question?
Yep.
So has the state said anything about if this would, how it's, would impact transportation reimbursement? I know they don't pay us the full amount anyways, but just, you know, are they going to be looking to get savings on that as well?
That's Wednesday's call with Desi, so I'll have more information after that. Lots of Zoom meetings.
So are we good to start to do a motion in a second from everyone to try to do the negotiation? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so I need a motion to negotiate from Northborough. So moved, can we use the language that Greg gave to us and just add until the end of the school year? Do we want it to end the school year or do we want it to until May fourth? Greg?
I would suggest it would be until when school opens again, specific language to that effect.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that we want maximum flexibility to negotiate. I think what we do know, the facts that we do know are we will be opening on May fourth. However, as we know, that could change as well, so you know, I'd like the flexibility to negotiate through the end of this academic year, June twenty third.
Okay, so I'll make the motion for Northborough.
Kelly Gannett. Wait a second. All right, so I have Joan and then Kelly. Right, Southborough?
I'll make the motion for Southborough.
Roger?
Second for Southborough, this is Paul.
All right, and then Regent?
I'll make that for Regent.
Second.
Paul Bucka and Dan Kalenda. Okay, you guys ready? You gotta do a roll call. Wait, you gotta put it back to on Northborough. Okay, Susan?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Katura?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Kathleen? Kathleen?
Yes.
Paul?
Jasmine?
Yes.
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kathleen Holland? Kathleen Holland?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. Is that all with the contract and services?
Uh, yes, at this point.
Okay. Um, so next is the Northborough, the NSborough Connect two point O.
So basically, hang on, let me just find one document. I'll just speak to it. I can't find it right now. So, so basically on March eighteen, we launched, the district launched NSborough Connect one point O, which was basically providing families with remote learning opportunities that were optional for families. We were waiting for legal counsel from Desi around special education services. And basically, we were following the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education guidance. We received new guidance that said that we could move to remote learning that's required. And we received that guidance midweek last week. We were already in plans to move to a more robust learning environment that's required and included new content. So we are launching NSborough Connect two point O. District leaders, principals, directors have been working in collaboration with associations on what this will look like. It's remote learning in the sense that not just computer-based learning, but, but experiences that can take place in the home that moves students forward academically. The difference really between NSborough Connect one point O and two point O is one point O was optional. Two point O is required learning. One point O was about skill building and skill maintenance. Two point O is about introducing new content to students. One point O also included non-grading. So there were no grades, there was feedback, so NSborough Connect two point O, students will be getting, receiving grades. We don't have all the details worked out, and we're working out the grading logistics specifically at the middle school and high school level where it's more complex. And also, we will be providing student support services, which Marie will speak about in a little bit, to our students in, in NSborough Connect two point O. The other thing that we did with NSborough two point O is really look at the master schedule. We have many families with children, with multiple children and multiple schools. And a lot of the feedback we were hearing from parents is that if you had a child at Woodward, Trotter and the high school, the overall schedule of the programming of NSborough one point O was very challenging. So when we launch NSborough Connect two point O, it has a master schedule that takes that into account where there are learning blocks for each of the, the different grade spans, pre-K through five, middle school and high school. It's a, a large undertaking with a lot of moving parts. The original plan was to launch sooner, but the more we got into the weeds and determining all the logistics, we decided to launch NSborough Connect two point O on Monday, April sixth. A communication will be shared with families on April first, this Wednesday, with the details and the schedules for students so that parents can digest the new program and think about how it will work in their household and ask questions. We are working very closely with families. Many families have gone in their own direction and developed their own homeschooling plans. They can continue in that direction if it is working for them. We just ask that they communicate this to building principals so that we can accommodate and support what's happening in the household. This has been a massive undertaking, moving from physical school. We are a people business with personal interactions with students, teachers. Moving the work that we do to a virtual environment is really challenging. And we're not trying to replicate the school experience, but we're trying to provide as many learning opportunities as we can in the home and supporting families during this difficult time. And I'd be happy to answer any questions the committee might have.
Greg, this is Roger. So I have a question, which maybe a question and a half, which is really aimed at trying to understand the, I guess, the gigantic challenge that, that this has presented. So first part of the question is, was one of the reasons that, one of the issues that was occurring for a family with students in multiple schools, that potentially the schedules conflicted with their, in their household, if you will, or, or was that not really that much of a problem?
That was one of the issues we were hearing from families. The other real challenge is many people were working remotely. So they had multiple kids trying to juggle their own work responsibilities, trying to educate their children. And again, they had multiple schedules going on in their fam, many families because of the multiple children. So that is, that is accurate, Roger.
So I, I imagine that if someone just had a high school student, that student might be relatively independent. And kind of conflicting, since there wouldn't be a conflicting schedule, it might be possible to kind of broaden the educational period of time was focused on the high school student. In contrast with, in, in contrast with a household that had a high school student, a junior high student, a middle school, or a middle school student and a grade school student, would that be fair?
Yeah, so I think that one of the recommendations is to replicate, don't try to replicate the entire school day. To look at approximately half the school day for students. You know, it's a lot of screen time. So at the high school level, for example, we are, we have, are trying to replicate the schedule within a two hour block where students are having real time interactions with their teachers. And then outside of those, that two hour block, students are given tasks and projects and assignments to work on throughout the day. And teachers will be available to students throughout the day, answering emails, helping where they can, from basically, at the high school level, it's going to be nine to two o'clock. And the, the two hour block for high school students to interact with their educators will be from, at the high school, it's twelve to, twelve to two o'clock.
So from twelve to two, they'll, they'll see all of their teachers that they have.
They'll go through, they'll go through their schedule and have some type of real time interaction with their, with their teachers. Whether it's a Zoom meeting like this, or a discussion board, or a chat, or a live Google Doc. There are a variety of ways for teachers to interact with their students.
So I just, I have one other question that, I don't know if necessarily has to do with two, two point O, but there has been chatter as far in the high school of when teachers are closing down their, their grading period for the third term. Some teachers close them down early in March and others haven't, and they're just trying to figure out what's going on.
The high school leadership team is coming up with a coherent approach with specific dates of when the term closed. And it's March, as of March twelfth, I believe, I don't, either March twelfth or March thirteenth. So more information will be shared with the community from high school about exactly what that entails and what the dates are. But it'll be consistent for every student. It won't be that one teacher closes down March first and the other student closes his or her grades on March thirteenth.
So I think that one teacher may have said it early and not every, it was, it didn't come out at the same time.
Yeah.
So I think that that was a problem.
Yeah.
Okay.
Greg? Hi, it's Kathy. I'm wondering, since you're the one who is the recipient of all the calls, how the families of our communities are faring? Is it a majority of complaints, a majority of looking for resources, acknowledgement for the good communication and resources? Just would like to get a general sense of that, please. Thank you.
So I would, I would categorize the, most of the calls and communications as very supportive and also looking for support. I think if you look at the forty five hundred students that we educate, you have a continuum of families. Some families have this figured out and are doing remarkably well considering the situation. Other families are really struggling, and we're trying to support families the way, the best we can. Some of the feedback I've received is that people are feeling like we're not moving quick enough, that we've been out of school for three weeks and we should have had something launched and ready, already. Which is a fair criticism, and others feel like we're moving too quickly for them, that they are barely hanging on. You know, people have lost their jobs and are trying to cope with a lot of emotional stress in their house and feel like we're moving too, too fast. In terms of the optional, I think some families and some teachers have done an outstanding job with the optional work. Other families are saying that optional isn't really good enough for their children, that they want new learning and more required, more rigorous learning to happen. So it's really, it's, it's been very positive and productive. It hasn't been negative, and we've received some really good feedback and constructive criticism that has helped us be better.
Could you also speak to the families of children with special needs who are used to having a lot of support and a lot of personnel on board?
Yeah, so I think that, you know, one of our biggest concerns is equity. So making sure that we provide equity of access to content and experiences. So Marie and the student support team has worked very diligently, as, as well as Jen Suker, the English Language Director at ROTA. But it's, it's, it's been challenging for, Marie, I'm not sure if you want to speak to it briefly.
I, I just want you to know that we are providing IEP and 504 services consistent with the start of the General Education Required Learning, which starts next Monday. So right now, staff in the meantime have been currently reaching out to all of our families, and they're providing students with enrichment and check-ins. Some of them are doing therapies with some students, they're doing some social groups. So things have begun. It's not one-on-one service delivery right now by any means, but they are starting those connections. They have reached out to all of their families right now. Some have, have not responded back, but I have checked in with every single team and every single liaison has at least reached out to every family. I also, Greg and I met with NSPAC next, last week, and they are an integral part of these conversations. And they said that their families can't say enough about the reach out that has been done so far. We have a long way to go, but at least the initial reach out has been very positive. We are having ongoing conversations with NSPAC and involving them in part of our discussions as far as rolling out the services as we go forward. We will be providing. As far as rolling out the services as we go forward, we will be providing IEP services. We will be doing I E P T meetings. What that looks like will be rolled out over the next week. We are also dealing with a very dynamic legal landscape. So as we get more and more information, we're developing a framework for services and I E P T meetings and what that's going to look like going forward.
I really appreciate the response from both of you. Thank you.
Marie, what about I know it's been a challenge across the state because everything moves so quickly. What about students who receive outplacement services? Are are those providers still providing what they need to? Or is the district now picking those pieces up?
Most of the out of district placements are providing the same type of services we are to our students through tele services. And some of our ABA folks, different third parties are actually still going into the homes, which I I'm wondering how long that will continue, but we do have those those people going into the home still. So we are going to be reaching out to every single out of district placement to find out exactly what those virtual services are going to look like. And we may need to also provide services going forward to backfill some of the things that they're doing. But right now, every single school, even though they're closed, they're providing that virtual connection to students.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all you're doing. I know this is there's a lot of uncertainty in in the special education world, even more so, I think, than the in the general ed world. So thank you for all the work you're doing.
No problem. Thank you. We'll continue to work on it.
You mentioned that there are some people who haven't responded, like some families haven't responded, even though that your people have reached out to them. What's going to happen with the kids who in the families who aren't responsive, who aren't going to be participating into this mandatory learning? Like, what's going to happen with that? Because I got to believe there might be a percentage of kids who or families that aren't going to participate in this.
They do have the right to opt out and then we'll we'll just have to work it through. But part of this, like Greg said, is all about the health and welfare of families. And all of our families are in different states of health and will continue to be in different states of health going forward. We are logging all of the families per building of the families that haven't been responding back. And principals and the teams are reaching out to them again. But they do have the option to opt out. It really depends on their families and their family situations. And we're hoping that we can reach most families. That that's our goal.
Is your goal to reach them before this kind of like the week that we're in right now?
Yes. We have already, we've already done multiple calls and multiple emails to the families that have not been responding back and will continue to do so.
Okay.
I have a question for Greg. Okay, Greg, when you were talking about the Connect 2.0 and you talked about the homeschooling, on that homeschooling, and you also said at the same time that, you know, the teachers are going to be required to give like new content with the 2.0. So the people that are choosing to do the homeschooling, are they doing the new content area? If it'd be new social studies, social studies area or science, or are they just doing their own curriculum at home? And does that have to be approved by you usually? I know this is a different circumstance, but usually homeschooling, if they want to do it, doesn't the curriculum have to be approved by you?
Yeah, so homeschooling and NSBRO Connect 2.0 are very different. Typically, if a family chooses to homeschool a child, they need to submit a curriculum plan. It needs to be approved by me. They need to have assessments and so forth. It's a much more in-depth process. But for this this short closure, some families are choosing to create their own curriculum at home and not participating in NSBRO Connect or 1.0 or 2.0. And as Marie shared, we're just reaching out in support to see what we can do to support the learning that's happening in the home. I did have a conversation with a family today and the parent showed me the schedule and it was it was quite impressive, well thought out and well done. But at this point, we're not, we're not approving officially parents who are doing their own thing through a homeschooling process formally because it really doesn't, this is a unique situation at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Rhoda, do you want to speak to our English learners?
Rhoda, hold the space down.
Rhoda, all right, we'll move, we'll move on.
All right, no, I am muted. Okay, so at this point, as soon as school closed, we started reaching out to our families and in the in different languages. So we have made contact with the families. As everyone said, the social emotional well being is the priority. And so we do have a way to connect with all our families and understand where each family is at.
So so that is NSBRO Connect 2.0. Again, more information will be provided to families this Wednesday. And we are launching on Monday, April 6th. Next, I just wanted to briefly talk about MCAS and some standardized testing, AP and SAT. So the state of Massachusetts has applied for a waiver to the U.S. Department of Education and has received verbal approval for that waiver, but they have not received the physical letter yet. My prediction is that MCAS, we will not have MCAS assessments this spring. And that for students at the high school level, for graduation determination, those will be waived as well. But we don't have specific information in terms of what's going to happen. As soon as we do, we'll communicate that out to schools and families so they know what to expect. In terms of AP, AP exams, College Board has is only doing online AP exams. They've actually created a condensed version of AP exams based on the content that's been covered to date. College Board has been excellent around providing free courses and classes for students, and we've sent that out to families and students. And we're we're optimistic our students will continue to perform well on AP exams. I know our AP teachers are excited about being able to move forward with new content as they're really committed to making sure students are prepared for the AP exam. And then SAT, so SAT sessions have been postponed and will be rescheduled once once the executive order is lifted and students are able to come back to school. So more information will be shared through guidance around SAT opportunities for students, specifically juniors who had planned on taking SATs this spring. So it's a shifting shifting information. And as soon as we know more specifics, we'll share it out with the community. But my prediction around MCAS is that we will not see, students will not participate in MCAS this spring. And we're just waiting official word before we communicate out to families.
So are they going to have to re are so the kids that were supposed to take the MCAS this year?
Yeah.
Are they gonna redo the test for the falls or are they gonna relearn the content that would have been on it?
So at the high school level, again, they have not shared the details. You know, at the high school level, they'll probably provide the assessment next year, next spring. Again, I don't have the details and as soon as I get those, I'll let the committees know and in schools know and students know as well.
I would just think and just on a side note, I would think that SAT would have to do the same thing because kids learning the content this year, that stuff will be on the SAT in the fall. And if you're behind, then you're not, you know, it's not really a fair test at that point.
Correct. And I think that the timing of, you know, MCAS and SAT and AP, that the positive is that typically most we're two thirds of the way through the school year, much of the content has been taught for the most part. And I think AP and SAT will acknowledge the content that has not been taught yet. And we've seen, like, for example, the AP exam being condensed to acknowledge that.
Okay.
So next is the is the associations and the memorandum of agreement for the COVID-19 health situation. One of the recommendations is that this is a significant change of working conditions for our educators. We worked very closely with our associations to develop NSBRO Connect 1.0. We've worked very closely developing NSBRO Connect 2.0. Educators are are key to making this work. So Heather Richards and I and the association presidents have been spending a lot of time together lately. And we just finalized a draft of an MOA that would take place through the closure. And then once we open back up, would be no longer in effect. And I'll have Heather speak to this briefly.
Hello. So this memorandum of agreement really is about the change in working conditions that is very unusual, given the circumstances. And when there is a change in working conditions, we're required to impact bargain. And that's really what this is. It does not change any of the terms of the collective bargaining agreement. That stays in place. This really falls under more of the management rights clause in the collective bargaining agreement where it changes how teachers deliver instruction. And that's really why it needs to be needed to be codified in an understanding. And really, it just outlines what we mutually understand remote learning is and what are the expectations going forward. And in this agreement, we link it back to the NSBRO Connect 2.0. And we have agreed with the associations that if there are changes in the NSBRO Connect 2.0, if we find that a part is not working very well for us, that we would come back and discuss it with them. And it would not actually change this MOA. But this is just really an agreement on how we operate going forward, given the circumstances.
I have a question about teachers working with students on IEPs or 504s. Obviously, this is a tricky situation. And I know that as of Monday, we'll be fulfilling those IEP and 504 modifications and accommodations. Is there any protection in this in case remote learning does not fulfill all of those needs?
Marie, can you speak to that?
Can you repeat that one more time?
Yes. So Marie, I know we were talking about Monday, starting with fulfilling the IEP and 504s and all the accommodations and modifications needed. So however, remote learning does present some challenges. So in this right up here in the memorandum, is there any protection for teachers who maybe will experience challenges? At least initially in fulfilling 504s and IEPs?
I would have to take a look at it, but right now, there is no requirement to provide all of the accommodations on 504s and IEPs that you would do if you were in a brick and mortar setting. The expectation is that you will provide the accommodations that are required in a virtual educational environment. So what that looks like will be reviewed by all of the teams. And work, the general ed staff will also be included to find out what those accommodations are and and what can be reasonably offered during the time of virtual learning. So it's a it's a work in progress. The IEPs and the 504s remain intact. However, there are expected modifications during this time of remote learning.
Thank you.
I have a question. In Roman numeral two, the educator will, and it's the last bullet. Greg, you had said in the 2.0, your introduction on it, that it was going to be graded and evaluated. So this looks like it's only on a pass fail basis, correct?
So that would be the period of closure. So and this is still being worked out at the middle schools and the high school. So the current thinking is that students would receive grades for assignments. But from April 6th to May 1st, their overall grade would be either a pass or fail. And then we pick up grading as of May for May 4th when students returned.
Okay. And then a follow up to that, when you talked about the homeschooling, would that student or students, would they be submitting something to their teachers that would be a pass fail system?
So again, we would work with families who aren't participating to determine how to best move students forward. One of the conversations that we've had is that no, no student will be retained or asked to repeat a grade level because of this disclosure. And that unless a parent or a family had a concern and reached out to us, and then we'd have a conversation around the next best direction for their child. So we're, these are some of the areas we're struggling with, quite frankly, in terms of how do you, how do you grade this? What if a student doesn't participate? Does that mean they fail during this period of time? The high school, it's much more complex because grades mean something in terms of transcripts and and final averages and in college acceptance. And we're having more conversations this week around making sure this is clear and it it makes sense to families and teachers and students.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about staffing. I know we've made it a point to continue paying all of the staff members and throughout the thing. Is that including hourly employees or is it just?
So that's, that's a great question. We we have paid all of our employees, including hourly employees. But it's it is an agenda item below that we need to talk about as committees to determine if that's the best course of action for the communities of Southborough and Northborough. Mr. Kalenda pointed out that it is, you know, we are using taxpayer money to pay the salaries of hourly employees and educators. So we want to make sure that we're being mindful and thoughtful in the way if if we're going to continue to do that. So it is on the agenda below as an agenda topic to discuss as a committee.
Yeah, can I have one? I had a question about the pass fail as well, but also further down, it talks about the fact that the teachers who are delivering the learnings are not required to use the video component of their of the online 2.0 and they can just be audio. You know, I I think now that I've been on several of these things over the during the during this crisis, the ability to see a person, you know, as you're communicating with them strikes me as as a value add that I'd really rather we didn't walk away from so easily. And I mean, maybe that's just me and I'm, you know, I'm certainly not an educator. But, you know, I like the idea of of the face to face, the Zoom sort of environment like we have here. And I'm thinking I'm reading this thing that says that the teachers are under no obligation to do that and they can just talk and you know, I'm guessing that would mean as well that the students then don't have to participate with through video either. And I mean, is that from an educator point of view? And I'm I'm going to fall onto the experience of you educators on the on the call here. I mean, is that is that really what we want to be doing or should we try to kind of push back a little bit on that?
So I would, I would just, you know, have others chime in as well, but I would just say that that is the exception, not the norm. Ninety nine percent of our educators are doing some some type of virtual video. But there are a few educators who don't feel comfortable having the video. You know, it's it's in their homes. There's a lot of privacy concerns. And we are also working with legal counsel around what this looks like. And Julie, I'm not sure if you want to chime in. And Julie, I'm not sure if you want to chime in from your perspective, as you've had a lot of conversations with educators.
Yeah, sure. And and as Greg said, I do think it's the, the, the majority of people are looking for ways to connect with the video. And we have not only Zoom, but we have Google Meet as well, which is something we'll continue to have for free. And we are encouraging the use of of Google Meet. We want to just be really mindful of a few things. One, when, when you suggested that all of the teachers aren't going to share their videos, then then the students might not want to share their video. We have to be mindful of privacy issues. And also, if if some teachers are going to think about recording these videos to then have available to students who might not be able to attend that live session, it, it may be a violation of the perp, which is because that that video recording could actually be considered like an educational document and and we're not allowed, unless we get full permission from parents, which we're, we're looking into. Teachers, for the most part, are doing an amazing job. And I think that we don't, we're, we're trying to ease them into this, not to say that maybe, maybe some somewhere down the line, we might then decide that this video component, if this continues, that this video component, I think, is is important for for everybody. I don't know if that was helpful or not, but.
I actually, so, so I have to say, like, you know, Ella's been doing her optional stuff. She's really, she enjoyed it. And her teachers have actually made it interest more interesting, I think, trying to keep their attention and try to have them come back and do the optional work. And some are doing, they'll send recordings, but then they'll also do a Zoom classroom. Other teachers will take a video of themselves and, you know, what their thought process is for the day and send that to the kids. So I think that there are a lot of teachers, I think there might be one of hers that hasn't done that yet. But for the most part, even for optionally, you know, it's been impressive just to listen to what the teachers are coming up with. They've had to be very creative.
What grade is that? Just asking.
She's a senior.
In terms of the video, I think it's good for the district to, you know, putting some clear expectations for students, parents and teachers. As you you mentioned, I'm glad to hear you're working with legal counsel because it just takes a one or two situations to really cause some problems. You know, you're going into people's homes and and where in the home are you going to be? And what are the expectations for the students also? Who's videotaping and posting? You know, these can be videotaped by clicking a button. And then it could be hosted in a different forum, Snapchat, so on. So clear expectations, particularly for the older kids, I think, is really important to protect staff and the students themselves.
Yeah, thank you. We are currently creating a website for NS Borough Connect 2.0. And we'll have those guidelines on the, on the website for families and students. And also, we are requiring teachers to use very stringent settings in Zoom. So that is, we definitely have that then, and that should be be available to everybody very soon.
Can Greg, can I ask, is the the exceptional use policy, is that play a role in this right now?
So we have the responsible use policy for students. We have a social media policy for faculty and staff and a responsible use policy for faculty and staff as well. And those were recently created and actually serve us well in this particular environment and situation. And we've communicated those policies out to faculty and staff to reread them and and revisit them during this particular time.
I wanted to.
Just that.
Go ahead.
Just the day teaching college students in my classes, which of course has been a big transition for them as well. But there's needs to be an understanding on the student side as to what makes a good digital learner. I had two students laying in their beds and it seemed kind of sensible that you'd sit your butt up. You know, to be attentive, to have a space that's work oriented, that doesn't confuse work and rest. You know, very straightforward things. And I was surprised, but this last week and a half or so of teaching online has really seemed like there needs to be some standards, like any classroom has had standards of behavior within it, that there needs, this needs to be explicit.
I was just going to mention, so I'm in our field, I'm a therapist and we've transitioned to telehealth. So we are talking a lot, and we have very good guidelines about how to do telehealth from a privacy perspective. So I do know at least our organizations have had guidance, either state or federal guidance. Some of the HIPAA regulations have been loosened, but also guidance to therapists on how to set up your, basically your workspace, so that there's no pictures in the background or it's very, you know, it removes some of the identifiers. So I do think, you know, my daughter has been doing some of the Zoom classes. She's in third grade. And I think it makes a huge difference for her to see her, not just to see her teacher, but to see her classmates and to have them interact just because she, you know, again, it's hard for them when there's no one and she's an only child. So I think the video component for me is a pretty, it's been pretty important for her.
I would just comment on the tenor of the conversations we had with the associations have has not been resistant one bit. It's been very collaborative. They are willing, you know, they are, they are doing amazing work. Our educators are really trying to do their best. But I think when our association, they think about, they don't think about the norm, they think about the exceptions. And I would say this particular area is around an exception because most of our teachers are doing some type of video conferencing with their students.
I would, I would just echo that. And I think that some of the our educators who are not so comfortable with technology are becoming more and more comfortable with technology as they're learning from one another and they're learning best practices from one another. So ha- having a mandate in there for video, I I just think is it's something that's going to happen probably organically.
So they, so all the teach, all the players in this, the teachers, they've all seen this.
Yeah, so the associations have have, I believe, shared it with their associations and have agreed to this document, this draft document, as well as the NS Borough Connect 2.0 with all the details and the guidelines as well that are referenced in that specific document.
Okay, so you want, so then we have to approve this?
Yeah, so so we'll have to, we're going to use DocuSign to send this out to the school committee members for signature and the the president's. But yes, we will need a motion to approve or to accept.
Okay. Is there any other special question before we move on? So was there any conversation with the teachers about teachers who are working towards their professional or tenure status? And whether the clock is continuing for them during this closure?
So we, we have not had that conversation. But our thinking is that if, if they're continuing teaching and doing NS Borough Connect 1.0 or 2.0, that essentially they're putting in their time towards their professional status. Heather, I don't know if you want to weigh in on this.
Yeah, I mean, this, this is time, time, time of teaching essentially. So it would count towards their PTS period.
Great, thank you.
One more question on this. How does this fall in line with the evaluation process? I know that's from the state and the regs, but there, there always were some dates in there, like in the final evaluation had to be done by a certain date. What is the status on that with teacher evaluations?
So this, the one of the areas, the state is giving some flexibility and guidance around our educator evaluation timelines and deadlines. So we're working on being more flexible with our professional status teachers. Ninety point, ninety nine point nine percent of our professional status teachers are in a great standing and are doing a fabulous job. If a professional status teacher is on an improvement plan, that's a different story. And we're really focusing our energies on pre-professional status teachers and making sure that they get thorough embedded evaluations. So we're, we're working on those details. We're trying to be as flexible as possible while also making sure that we're doing a good job evaluating our, our non-professional staff and those staff that we're concerned about who have professional status.
I thought I saw a line in here, Greg, that said it was waived, that that whole evaluation process was.
Correct, and that's not for pre-professional status teachers. For professional status teachers, they who are in good standing, they will receive the same rating that they received in the spring of 2019, unless they're on a needs improvement, an improvement plan, then they'll be evaluated.
Actually, if I could just jump in here, what is waived in here is the number of observations required under the the collective bargaining agreement. Not that the evaluation itself would would be required or would be waived.
It, does it state here in the document?
Yeah, can you go to that, that line, Greg? Thanks.
Where do you, I'm sorry, which bullet?
It's the second bullet under the district will. So it speaks to the number of observations. So it's very clearly outlined in the evaluation process, how many observations will occur. And because of the time period that we're in, some of those observations would be unable to happen. And so that's the portion that's waived here.
And would that also include the dates? Because I, my memory serves me right, there were always certain dates.
Yeah.
Besides the number of observations, it's also the dates.
There are specific milestone dates that are laid out in the educator evaluation agreement document that was developed a few years ago. So a lot of those dates are actually coming up in terms of submitting evidence to evaluators, evaluators completing observations, formative reports and so on. So that's where we have flexibility from DESI to try to navigate this timeframe of closure. And again, we're very fortunate. We have very few teachers on needs improvement plans who are professional status teachers. And our, our real focus is on our pre-professional status teachers and making sure that that their evaluations continue in a rigorous and thorough manner.
So is, is Sarah and the department heads then, are they going to have the ability to see what the teachers are doing through this process?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Okay, so do we want to make a motion to approve the association's memorandum agreement?
I have a question.
Yeah.
So someone, and my question revolves around dates. Someone may have mentioned this already. There, the only, there's a, I guess there's a, there's a date in the agreement that talks about after May 4th. The agreement itself, and then that's the bullet at the top of the last page, if the closure is extended beyond May 4th. I, I, I don't know that this, it doesn't really have a start date that I've seen. And unless someone mentioned this before, I think there's a typo at the end because it says the 30th day of 2020, but it doesn't give a month. So.
Had a start date.
Well, a lot of, I mean, if that's necessary, I don't know if this is necessary. You know, this isn't, these aren't typical times. A typical agreement that I'm
So.
I'm used to is 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 there's an agreement has a date on it. And then, then there's the date that you've signed it, but that looks like it needs a month in it.
Yes.
So I just don't know. I'm just raising it for discussion.
So this is linked directly to the NS Borough Connect 2.0. So it's in place with NS Borough Connect 2.0. And then I do see that the date, the month needs to be inserted. But it is linked to the 2.0.
Okay, so in, in this motion, it will just be calling it the memorandum of agreement. Well, I guess someone else, you can, I guess, identify how you want the motion worded.
Yeah, we could call it the COVID-19. And and again, we can make an edit to the, the title of the agreement and the date below Roger. But we could call it the COVID-19 memorandum of agreement, just to make sure it's very specific and clear for what it is.
Okay.
Can I, with, and I know I won't, we can do a motion. Can I just have one more quick question, unless you already answered this? As far as grading goes, if this goes past May 4th and you have like the pass fail piece of it, are you going to then keep it pass fail? Are you going to start grading at that point? Like what is, has, is there like a thought process that this goes past May 4th?
Yeah, I think that right now, we're, we're kind of looking at that, that May 1st as hoping that we'll return on May 4th. We are talking about what if scenarios. And I wish I could tell you right now that we have all the answers around exactly what we would do if there's an extended closure beyond, beyond May 4th. I can tell you that we are having conversations with the school based leadership team, the high school principals, department chairs, educators around what makes the most sense and maintains the rigor and accountability at the student level around grading. But at this point in time, I don't have a good answer for you.
Okay. All right, so does somebody want to come with a motion for the COVID-19 approval association's memorandum agreement?
I'm going to give it a shot. I make a motion that we approve the COVID-19 memorandum of agreement between the district school committees and the district teachers associations.
Okay.
That would be for Southborough, I'll second for Southborough, this is Paul.
Okay, so Roger made the motion as a first, and then Paul Desmond is second for Southborough. Northborough?
I'll make the. For Northborough. Oh, sorry, Joan, did I catch you on that one? I'll motion for Northborough.
Okay, so Susan for Northborough.
I'll second for Northborough.
Okay, Joan, second for Northborough and then.
For the region.
No, second for the region.
Okay, so Dana Kalenda make the motion and second is Paul Bucka. Okay, so we're ready. Susan? I need to, we have to do a roll call. So Susan?
Yes.
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kelly? Kelly? I'll come back. Katura?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yep.
Paul?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kathy, yes. Kathleen?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Paul? Joan?
Yes.
Kathleen Holland?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Dan? Sean? Lynn?
Yes.
And I got to go back.
It looks like Kelly, it looks like Kelly might have gotten disconnected. I don't see the connection anymore.
Sounds like it passed.
Yeah, sounds like it, it sounds like an abstain, yeah.
Yeah, so should we put her down as abstaining since she's left the meeting or just note she left the meeting at?
It doesn't.
She left the meeting at 8:34.
Correct.
Eight thirty four, okay.
And no vote, you don't call it an abstain.
Say she left, we'll say she left the meeting at eight thirty four according to our clock and she did not participate in the vote. Okay.
Correct.
Okay, so no vote. Okay.
Okay, that she's having tech troubles, it's not letting her back into the meeting.
Okay.
Julie, where's Julie for tech support?
I will.
I'm just kidding, Julie. A dry sense of humor of mine.
Okay, so that passes. All right, so now we want to do revolving accounts and fees.
So, so we've obviously with an unexpected closure, we've been very mindful of our end of year balances and revolving accounts. And Becky has been working on identifying what the potential impact of the closure would be. So I'll have Becky speak to revolving accounts kindergarten in Northborough, Northborough and Southborough preschool and athletics.
So with both the kindergarten, the Northborough kindergarten and with the preschool.
So with both the kindergarten, the Northborough kindergarten and with the preschool programs, we have notified the families that we intend to issue a refund for the school closure. In terms of the kindergarten, we're monitoring the revolving account. And also the length of the closure before we finalize a final figure. The same with our preschool as well, we have a number of salaries that are tied to both of those accounts. And so we are really trying to be mindful on both of those. So that we have the least amount of impact on the operational budget as possible with both kindergarten and with preschool. In terms of athletics, as of February 29th, the athletics revolving account did have a balance of We have not collected any spring sports fees to date. The MIAA today just announced that the spring season would begin when school resumes on May 4th. So we will be working with Mike Massarino on any spring sports fees. And so we are, we're ready to get moving on that. We're looking at our spring coaches in terms of what the stipends are going to look like since it may be an abbreviated schedule. And, you know, we're just continuing to monitor the bottom line on all three of those revolving accounts.
I have a question actually about extended day. Has there been, cause I know there was some discussion at the extended day board meeting, because extended day pays rent to the school. Is there going to be a reimbursement to extended day because families are not being charged for?
So we, the extended day coordinator reached out to me today in an email. So we will be having conversations with the extended day program. And, but we have not had those conversations yet, but plan to.
Thanks.
So next, end, end of year events. So I've asked all the schools to list the key end of year events that take place in the months of May and June. Specifically at the middle school level and high school level, obviously there are a number of junior and senior events, significant events, milestone events for our seniors. And we're just trying to remain optimistic, but also think about scenarios if we do not come back in session after May 4th. We, we don't have any good solutions if we don't come back into session, but we are thinking about what could we do specifically around graduation and, and senior events? We're also looking at all of the transition meetings that happen across our 10 schools to help students transition to the next school or that grade level and thinking about what those would look like. So again, we're just monitoring and inventorying what's going to take place and coming up with scenarios so that, you know, we're being mindful and thoughtful of how to proceed if things change and we don't return on May 4th. So next, our student IP, student support services, Maria, do you want to just, I know you spoke briefly about IP services. Do you want to, do you have anything to add? So I guess she does not, so.
Marie, hold down your spacebar. Oh, Kelly's back.
It's still off.
So while we're waiting for Marie, so circuit breaker, special education reimbursement and our federal grants IDEA 94142, which are significant dollars. And Becky has been monitoring these very closely. Becky, do you want to speak to these two?
Sure, with the circuit breaker, so we're preparing to file for fiscal year 21 circuit breaker funds. And DSE has held multiple online trainings this week for districts. We are being, actually I guess it was last week. We are being directed by DSE to continue to pay tuitions for collaboratives and for out of district programs. And these funds can be used in the claim process as we are going forward for FY21 circuit breaker funds. In terms of the IDEA grant, this is one of the largest funding sources that we have for our student support services, external funding sources. So last month, we were notified that the district had been awarded an additional $4,790 for our FY20 grant. We met collectively and determined that those additional funds will be used for assistive technology tools that may assist students with home-based learning during our closure. So that was a small positive, but a positive as it relates to our IDEA grant. And we are also being instructed that we can continue to pay our staff out of these federal funds during the closure.
Can I ask, so like a, an out of district placement? If that's been closed down by the government and whatever state that happens to be in, and that student is back at home, did, did you just say DSE is suggesting we continue to make payments for that placement?
So I'll let Marie speak to the logistics of that, but they are recommending that, and that is because those districts, just like our district, are continuing to provide services to those students while they are home. And Marie, maybe, it looks like you're unmuted, so maybe you can add to that.
Yes, yes, I finally figured it out. I don't know why. It went from the full screen to just one person. I couldn't get back to myself. Anyway, I'm okay now. Uh, yes, they are suggesting that we pay for the out of district placements. First of all, once we come back from this closure, we are going to expect services to continue. And one reasoning is if we put people out of business, we're not going to have placements for students. The more important guidance is that once you terminate a placement in an out of district, you are no longer providing faith to that student. So there will be lots of legal ramifications from that choice. So we, we, today in our legal conference, it was still recommended that we continue to pay. However, like I said before, we are reaching out to every out of district placement to find out what they're doing to provide services to students. They are all providing services to students in some way. There was only one place that did close, and that, that's a different situation. But we are going to document exactly what they are providing to students. So it is recommended we continue at this point in time.
But if I could, but in, in cases where that out of district placement includes, includes room and board and, and, you know, 24-hour day supervision, I mean, they, they certainly aren't providing that anymore if they've sent the student back to us. I mean, I would assume the charge would be dramatically less. And, and I, I would hope we would ask for some sort of a reduction in the, in those fees, because they're pretty expensive.
Right, and we are working through that. There's a lot of questions, certainly. The residential component is a concern, some residential placements have remained open.
I think we'll hear more, we'll receive more guidance from the department. I think they're under the, with dealing with the facts that we're closed through May 1st, which is different if we remain closed for an extended period of time beyond May 1st. They, we are constantly getting new guidance and updates. But again, these are, these are contracted services technically, so we are monitoring them and watching them closely. And Marie, again, has been, I think she's spending most of her time on conference calls trying to get information about how to proceed in these areas.
Marie, may I ask, or maybe, maybe I should say through Greg, if, may I ask? Just what's the total number of out of district placements we have? Is that a, is that a legitimate question to ask?
That is a legitimate question. I don't have it right in front of me right now, but it's about, it's about 12 per district.
About 12 per?
Approximately, right.
About, about 12 per district? So somewhere between, somewhere between 30 and 40 total?
Yes, and that's on the high side, probably around 30, 30 to 35. And I can get you an exact number, we, we track all of that. I just don't have the document up in front of me.
I don't need the exact number, I was really look, just looking for what you gave me, thank you.
Okay.
So the other person I, who would like to just give a minute to speak is Mary Ellen Dogan, the district wellness coordinator. So Mary Ellen has done an amazing job coordinating, working with all of us, coordinating lunches, thinking about the health and, and safety of our students, working with the nurses, working with the boards of health in both communities. So Mary Ellen, I'm not sure if you want to give a, a quick update from your perspective.
Sure, I hope everybody's well and staying safe. It's nice to see you all. I guess we've just been monitoring, as you know, the cases in each town arising, so we are supporting the boards of health. They're public health nurses. Our nurses are going to be helping them make calls when they're needed. We're kind of on call right now. Checking in with staff and families that, we're actually enjoying delivering lunches and having some six feet away contact with some of the kids. There was a great sign in the window, I didn't even tell anybody else about this. I, I told the nurse tomorrow she had to take a picture. One of the kids made a big sign that said, "Thank you for bringing us food." So they were, they're enjoying it. I'd like to thank Dr. Saf Darmedina and Dr. Carrie Wilkins, who I've been consulting with because we had to think about, you know, it's everybody's physical health now, but also their mental health that we, and wellness that we need to be particularly aware of as we are entering into this third week of our social distancing platform of education. So I just, that's about it for me. We're here to answer any questions and be resource for everybody.
Mary Ellen, I truly appreciate everything that you guys have done, and it's like them, and I, that, I wish, you know, the greatest of health for everybody. In my house, it's more like the mental piece of it. That's really hard for even, you know, one of my college kids at home, just because, you know, as much as they rely on their phone, they really want the physical contact with their friends, you know?
Yeah, I think we're all feeling that now, even like, we're, we're all kind of done with this social distancing. Maybe on Zoom, we need to be around people. So I think that's going to be a big piece of it now, is going to be making sure everybody's staying mentally healthy, you know, and this, the stress and dealing with stress in a healthy way. So I actually met with Dr. Medina and Dr. Wilkins, and we're going to be sending out some communication about your mental illness and keeping yourself healthy.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mary Ellen, I have a question about mental health. Are you working with the guidance or adjustment counselors at all? Especially with their caseloads, they might have students who already have mental health challenges and, and might be in an even sort of worse state now.
So all of the guidance department, whether their behavior specialists, the psych, school psychologist, the guidance, the adjustment counselors, they're all checking in with their caseloads and making that personal connection with their students and their high-risk students as the nurses are checking in with their medically high-risk students. So everybody's making that connection along with the teachers having a connection with their students. All of our support staff is also making those connections.
Thank you.
So that is the COVID-19 update. So it's definitely a team effort from the folks you've heard from, and there are many more behind the scenes trying to make this work on behalf of our students in the community. And again, I think I'm very grateful for the dedication of, of the faculty and staff and, and the support of families. So it's, it's not been a normal time. But it definitely has brought out the good in people throughout our district, which is nice to see.
Okay, so the next is discussion and action, oh, sorry, Mary Ellen.
Did I just say something? I think we all owe Greg a big thank you to, he's done an awesome job through all of this and leading us all through it.
What a first year.
No. I'm just doing my job, so.
I do want to say that the communication around this has been really amazing, and a lot of the community members and parents have told me how impressed they are. And I, I just think it's been, you know, there's a lot of information out there and you've, you've really sent out some great emails and information, I think that's been very clear. So, so thank you.
You're welcome. So the next topic is discussion and action on continued pay of hourly employees. So as of today, we have been paying our hourly employees. DSE has made a recommendation, some guidance to districts across the Commonwealth to continue paying hourly employees. But honestly, it's a local decision, it's not a DSE decision. I've had conversations with the town administrators in Northborough and Southborough with the understanding again that this is taxpayers' money. One of the considerations that we're looking into is what's the right thing to do for our employees? And also what is the impact if employees are laid off? And what is the impact in terms of unemployment costs to the towns of Northborough and Southborough? So we thought it was important to bring this to committee, to the committees for a larger conversation and to provide us with some direction on how to move forward with hourly employees and their compensation.
So Greg, with that, do you have a recommendation?
So my recommendation is to continue to pay our hourly employees through May 1st, the, the first wave of closure from what we know now. The, the money to pay the employees has been encumbered, we've encumbered the money throughout the year as part of our normal financial routines. So it's not as if we're incurring new costs. And I also think that we are trying to put our employees to work to the best sensibility. For example, ESPs, some of our nurses, you know, whether they're riding the bus, whether they're supporting teachers. So they are working just in a very different capacity. So my recommendation is to, to continue to pay hourly employees through the closure of May 1st, and then revisit it if the closure is extended to a longer period of time.
So Greg, I have one observation, and not that I'm advocating this, because I think your, your idea is a very good one. I have seen that there, there has been times where some communities are paying the delta between what they would receive on unemployment and, and their, their compensation from the district. Is that something that is viable or not?
So complete transparency, we have not had discussions around what that, what that would look like. But it's something I'd be happy to have conversations with Becky and, and both towns to look at if that's a viable solution.
So this is Paul, if I could, so Greg, do we know what the, the towns themselves are doing with their hourly employees that, whose, whose work schedules have been impacted?
Yeah.
To me, you know, we should, we should look to, to their guidance, or at least know what they're doing before we make, before we.
So I have, I have had conversations with Mark Purple and John Kader, and they are paying their hourly employees. And one of the things we talked about is making sure there's parity, and, and these decisions I've been working very closely with the two town administrators and have been in almost daily contact with them throughout this whole process.
Greg, I, I agree, well, I support your recommendation, but a comment on Dan's, I, I guess, discussion point. I'm no expert on unemployment law. And Dan, it sounds like you're familiar with people that have paid the delta. But it, you know, in, in our business, when you start to pay people something, then it, then it gets into almost a. then it then it gets into almost a circular issue where they're getting paid something. So does that change the unemployment amount? I'm not sure. I guess, Greg, if you if you have those kinds of discussions, you might see if you can get any feedback on that because I think it might be tricky.
I think it's worth exploring the the concept and seeing if it's feasible. So I'd be happy to do that in collaboration with Becky.
And obviously, there's and good point, Roger. I mean, and and Greg, as you know, there's a tax component of that, too. I mean, I don't believe they're taxed on it until, you know, well, after the, you know, next year's taxes. So that would be an issue if you receive unemployment. Again, I just think on behalf of the taxpayers, it's worthwhile to have that discussion. I think we we were very fortunate to live in a in a very, you know, generous district, and and this, these are very difficult times for so many. And then I would like to see us, and as you said, it's been budgeted to the extent we can we can take care of our, you know, hourly workers. And you've already, you know, illustrated how you're you're doing your best, and and some of them are are still doing what they can on behalf of the district. You know, I I I'm definitely in favor of you having those discussions on what the best path forward would be. Are you and let me ask you, are you asking us to vote on a you know, manner tonight, or are you asking to, you know, have the the authority to have those discussions and come back for to a subsequent meeting?
So I think that I would like, if if it's the will of the committee to make a motion to pay hourly employees through the May 1st and then revisit and allow me some time to do my due diligence and do research and work in collaboration with the towns to explore the concept of of paying the difference. But I would come back after May 1st if there's an extended period of closure beyond that time and and ask for another vote of the committee.
That makes sense to me.
Greg, Roger, Roger again, and I and I emphasize I do support your recommendation. Is there an estimate of sort of how much this is? Let's say we're talking about for the next month, right? Do we have a a kind of, again, general monthly number that we kind of understand that's that's the kind of dollars it involves?
Sure. Becky, do you want to speak to that?
I don't have it for each of the groups. It's the number of employees that are involved. It would include all of our administrative assistants, our clerical aides, non-instructional aides, instructional aides, our custodians, and our cafeteria workers for all three districts. So if I can run those numbers and get you that information, especially if we are looking at a longer closure, we will need to have that information.
Okay.
I have a question or comment. So the other thing to keep in mind also, and I don't, I don't know exactly. I know you alluded to the fact of the the unemployment. There is like for the for the high school, the regional district, we would pay those unemployment costs. So there'd be some offsetting of of the savings. But I'm also not sure what happened to the extra $600 that was just passed in the CARES Act. Do we have to pay that, or is that something the fed feds are going to give all the you know, without having the employer, this is employer funded. I don't know if the $600 is employer funded. I know. And, you know, for the short time, it's definitely, I, you know, agree, you know, in supportive of, you know, keeping them on just because of the savings, but also, you know, when we if whatever happens in May, you know, keeping that in mind, you know, the idea behind the social distancing is so that people don't come in. And the idea behind the extra $600 is so that people won't feel the financial pressure to, you know, come in to their job or that kind of situation. So I think there's a lot of things to weigh, but, you know, in in May or, you know, if it's, you know, going to be through the rest of the year, I mean, there is that extra money that is intended to almost give people a decent amount of money in their in their unemployment.
If I can also just point out, too, that these employees are all given, being given projects or assignments, or they have expectations that they need to do while they are working from home, whether it be some online trainings. Our insurance carrier, Maya, has a great offering that's been sent out to all the administrators so that they can have some trainings that have been assigned. They're supposed to be checking emails. So there is an expectation that they are, you know, performing some duties while they're home. Is it the same as it would be if they were actually physically in the buildings? No, but there is an expectation that they are working in some fashion.
Well, you know, the fact that it can, the people can work remotely, then, you know, we're kind of keeping in with that, you know, social distancing, but, you know, it's, if it's like a long-term situation for the ones that their job isn't isn't conducive to working from your house, or it's not needed. Just something to think about because they may not be as disadvantaged, other than the fact if they're on, you know, we also have to consider like health insurance and what that would be if they're on health insurance and and that, you know, that's not really covered by the unemployment benefits that were enhanced.
So we will do some scenarios and calculations around a longer term closure and what the impact and the cost benefit analysis of moving people to unemployment. But again, it is my recommendation to continue to pay our hourly employees through the May 1st closure with the understanding that we will revisit if it's if the closure extends beyond May 1st. We'll have more more guidance and more data for the committee to to review.
Okay. Motion language, if you want me to go ahead and read that in?
Yep.
Please.
All right. I have the motion to pay hourly employees. I move that during the period starting March 13th to 2020 to May 1st, 2020, inclusive or to such later date as the governor of Massachusetts may determine for the continued closure of all public schools in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, or the superintendent may determine for the continued closure of Northborough Public Schools, Southborough Public Schools, and the Northborough-Southborough Regional School District, whichever date is later, due to COVID-19 in the 2019-2020 school year. Here and after, referred to as the closure period, the Northborough School Committee, Southborough School Committee, and the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee, subject to the prospation, shall pay the regular wages for workdays during the closure period to each employee of Northborough Public Schools, Southborough Public Schools, and Northborough-Southborough Regional School District, excluding day substitutes, provided that each such employee to be paid performs work that may be requested or required by the employee supervisor during the workdays to be paid in the closure period. Nothing in this motion limits any rights that any employee may have to take vacation, sick, or personal leave due to the closure period. I move for Northborough.
Okay, so Susan moves to Northborough.
Second for Northborough.
All right, so Joan, second. Southborough?
I'll move for Southborough. This is Paul.
Okay, so Paul Desmond for Southborough.
Move for the region.
I'll second for Southborough. This is Roger.
Okay, so Roger seconds for.
I'll second for the region.
All right, so Dan, motion for the region, and Paul Bucka, second for the region.
Can I ask a question, if I could? You know, all of our conversations up until now have talked about paying these guys through May 1st. This language is very open-ended in terms of when the end date for the payments would be. And and, you know, to the extent that we know that the towns, for example, if we're following the towns example, are going to pay these folks, their folks through May 1st, then I'm all for it. But if the town does something different on May 2nd, if for some reason this this closure period extends for months longer, you know, I don't I don't want us to be kind of locked into not following their example. This is, this is different than what we've been talking about right up until now, in my.
I had the same question. We were talking about May 1st, and at that point in time, kind of hearing what what the administration had maybe determined at that point in time and looking into this. So this is pretty, this is pretty open.
I I think what you you guys are all exactly right, but I think I heard from Greg that he would come back to us on May 1st. We can do anything different that we may choose effective May 1st beyond if we want. This is today's, we're putting this in motion today. You know, it does say May 1st or to such later time as the governor may determine, but we are also able to determine if we want to do something different after May 1st. And Greg already said he'd come back to us at that time. We could either vote to reapprove this and keep it going, or we could go a different course if he has a different recommendation, and we agree.
Dan, you see, you're the attorney here. You see verbiage in here that says we could renege on this on May 2nd if the governor kept the schools closed for two more months?
I would defer to Heather on that, but the the, what I'm suggesting is that we either, we we can either change this motion if we want, but I believe we have the right as a district to to, yeah, we can reset the motion that we previously made and and make a new one.
I I agree. I think that, and I think that you have Greg's word that he's going to come back to you. But here it says, starting March 13th, 2020. So this goes retroactively to to May 1st, 2020. Now, Greg's already provided assurances that he's coming back to you before the May 1st date when we have more information. So I don't think that there's anything in this that should be concerning.
Greg, are you there?
I am here. I'm just looking at what language we could strike if we want to just make it crystal clear.
I think it has to be like the quote, you know?
I mean, I think that you do have my, I think this is a decision beyond one that I feel comfortable making. It's, I think it's a committee decision, committee's decision. So I mean, you definitely have my word that I would bring this back to the committee if we're closed beyond the May 1st date that's listed here. But I was just looking to see if there's language we could strike, just to make the motion crystal clear.
Can you add a sentence to it, just that we'll, you know, we'll come back?
Or just.
Or remove inclusive to later date?
Yeah.
Yeah, right there.
Strike that.
Yeah, just have it end at May 1st.
I I think you would actually strike it all the way down to due to COVID-19. I think one more sentence. Because that's where it goes down to whichever date is later. No, come on, come on back, come back up to the, yeah, to the end of that line right there. It ends with whichever date is later.
I agree.
Ted.
I mean, I think we're going to be having to get together to discuss things anyway. So I don't think we have any risk in striking this language at this point in time. And it's kind of all set to go to just plug in, you know, another time period if we want to continue it exactly as it is.
If if that provides additional assurances, there's no, there's no problem with striking that.
I'll revise my motion to include the amended language. I will amend my motion for Northborough.
I'll amend. Let's see who, did I make the motion or did I second the motion for Southborough? I forgot.
I made it. I'll amend for Southborough.
I'll second.
So amended for the region.
Okay. Okay, so we're doing this, amending the 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 language. So roll call. So Susan.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Lauren.
Yes.
Joan.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Katara.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Jen.
Yes.
Kathy, yes. Kathleen.
Yes.
Paul, Paul Desmond.
Yes.
Paul Bucka.
Yes.
Joan.
Yes.
Kathleen Holland.
Yes.
Lauren.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Sean.
Yes.
Lynn.
Yes.
All right, on to our next. So the personnel report.
So Heather, you want to give a quick update?
Heather?
You're muted.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
So the search committee for the assistant superintendent search has convened three times. And we are moving forward in the interview process, which will be happening later this week. I'm pleased to share that there was a very deep applicant pool. We had about 52 candidates, which shows that there was a lot of visibility for the position. And the interviews are happening this week, and the the committee will be making recommendations to Greg as to who we'd like to move forward as finalists.
Thank you.
Anyone? So are you guys doing that on Zoom?
We are. It has been a learning experience for everyone.
Yes, and I'm not looking forward to it if it's going to be anything like tonight for me.
Come on, Kelly. You know, we've had all this practice in the superintendent, assistant superintendent meetings. We should be good at this stuff by now.
Why am I the only one who's having problems tonight?
Kelly, you need to borrow a device from the district.
I have to.
Okay, so our next is the Asa Good Valley Collaboratives.
So just distribution of the FY19 audit and the 2019 annual annual report.
Okay, and the next is to discuss and authorize, discuss and action to authorize school committee electronic signatures.
So one positive outcome of of all of what's happening is our move, our movement towards DocuSign. So Becky has done a great job moving this forward. And we need a a motion to authorize a school committee for electronic signatures. And I do have a motion, and I'm not sure, Becky, if you want to say a few words about the motion or or the purpose for this.
So part of the modern modernization, the Municipal Modernization Act does allow for school committees to sign payroll and AP warrants electronically. And so it was recommended by our council and that we have the school committees vote to approve the process of electronic signatures. Unfortunately, this meeting is happening after we've had a couple of, you know, where we've had payrolls for all three districts go through the process. So, you know, I'm anxious to get this going as I was anxious to actually get this electronic process going.
Okay, so do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion for Northborough.
Seconded.
Okay.
Read it.
I have to read it. For Northborough, I move that an electronic signature, meaning any electronic identifier, identifier used by an individual to indicate acceptance and approval will have the same force and effect as a manual signature for the purposes of authority authorizing AP and payroll warrants. The district shall maintain electronically signed records in a manner consistent with the district's record and retention policies.
Okay, so I have Joan.
Seconded.
Okay.
I'll move for Southborough.
Second for Southborough.
Move the region.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry.
No, we're just having fun with you, Kathy.
I'm just trying to write this down in case I have to, like, give it to anybody. Okay, so it was Joan and Keith, and then was it Roger and Paul?
Paul and Roger.
Paul, Desmond, and Roger, second, and then was it?
The usual.
Dan, and then?
Paul Bucka.
Paul Bucka.
And then Paul Bucka. All right. Roll call, we're ready. So Susan. Susan.
I messed my screen up for a second, it went crazy, yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Lauren.
Yes.
Joan.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Katara.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Paul. Desmond.
Who's he asked it, yes.
Jen.
Yes.
Kathy, yes. Kathleen.
Yes.
Paul Desmond.
Yes.
Paul Bucka.
Yes.
Joan.
Yes.
Kathleen. Holland.
Yes.
Lauren.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Sean.
Yes.
Lynn.
Yes.
All right. All right, so anything else? Greg?
No, thank you for our first completely virtual meeting. We are live for about another three minutes as we close out the meeting, but thank you. And I'm sure we'll be meeting sooner than later.
Okay, so then, do I have to have Union do this, too, for the last one?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, you have to put the list back up, unless I can get everyone. Wait, all right, so I need a motion from Northborough to adjourn our meeting.
So move for Northborough.
All right, who just motioned for Northborough?
Keith.
Okay.
Second for Northborough.
Joan for Northborough. Southborough?
Southborough.
Was that Paul?
Second for Southborough.
Okay, so Paul Desmond and Roger. And then, Regent.
Kelly Gannett for Union.
Kelly for Union. Do I have a second for Union?
I'll second, I'll second, Paul Desmond.
Okay, and then Regent.
So moved.
Second.
And Paul, all right, so Joan and then Paul Bucka. All right, so let me see if I can get this. I'm just going to do it on my screen, since it looks like the Brady Bunch. Oh, Kathy, yes. Joan.
Yes.
Keith, oh, Keith, you're not part of this. Sean.
Yes.
Kathleen. Klatchgo. I saw, yes, unmute yourself.
Unmute, unmute.
I can see you're yelling, yes. Lynn.
Yes.
Paul Desmond.
Yes.
Paul Bucka.
Yes.
Jen. Remac.
Yes.
Katara.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Kathleen Holland.
Oh, yes.
Susan.
Yes.
Lauren.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes, ma'am.
We did it.
I, I, I think everyone's screen is in a different order, so it's kind of like playing Jeopardy or something like that, you know, I don't know.
Names come up, so I can see you all.
Well, thank you, and nice job, Kathy.
All right, guys, stay healthy.
Nice job, Kelly.
Thank you. Bye.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Wash your hands.